Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the January 21st, 2025 regular scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. I've asked Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Mobley to lead us in the pledge. If y'all would, please stand.
Let us pray. God, our Father in heaven, we come before you this time in this hour, dear God. render things unto you for all that you have done and doing for us right now. We thank you, God, for how you brought us through the dangerous highways and made a safe force, dear God. Now, Lord, we ask for that you are blessed as our word here, dear God. Watch him protect us, God. As the storm come in, dear God, protect us, dear God. And look on those homeless, dear God, that's out there, God. Have them to find shelter. In God, we ask, dear God, to look upon this board, dear God. Blessing one of us, dear God. Let the words of our mouth and meditation of our heart be accepted in our sight. Ask heaven, Father God, to bless, dear God, our nation, dear God. Look on our nation in the mighty way, dear God. Look on, dear God, our forces, God, our foreign land and those that is here, near, and far. Ask on God, you look, dear God, upon all of our workers here on this, in this county, dear God. Bless and keep on him, Father God. As you bless our first responders, look and protect them. In God, as the storm, dear God, come in, dear God. Protect all, dear God. Let us not have emergency, no harm, no injuries. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the world for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. It's cold tonight, bad weather coming, so we will try to keep this short and sweet so everyone can get home safely. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the January 7th, 2025 regular scheduled board meeting and the January 10th, 2025 bid tabulation for RFP 2025-02. Any questions, comments, or concerns from board members on those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner White. I have a second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is the public concerns and comments. Mr. Fontana, I do have a sheet from Mr. Steve Montana of Fontana, not Montana, Steve Fontana, I knew that. 211-81-140 Street, of Live Oak. Welcome, sir.
That's it. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jason Fury and his department for their support of the Chris Ann Hall event that we had. We had over 100 people. We consider the event a success.
Fantastic.
And, you know, actually, and I want to tell you a little story. I was here at one of the commissioner meetings, and I was talking to Jason, saying how we got to find a projector. We were worried about, my projector was, it was too dim. He had a backup projector. It wasn't your main one, but it worked great. So, we were getting ready to use that projector, and then I found out from Chris Ann Hall that she had a MacBook. That concerned me because I didn't have a MacBook to test it, so I, we ended up buying one anyways. But I really appreciated, he went to the extra mile of, you know, he didn't have to, but he just sent me a text and said, hey, I got a projector. And he lent it to me, and we were going to use it. And, oh, one other thing I had on the list there, you might have, maybe you were going to announce it, but next Tuesday, a week from today, there's a, what do they call it? A legislative delegation meeting, which is basically Corey Simon and Jason Shaw will be at City Hall at 2:00 PM. I encourage you to go on the state website, just search on 2025 state bills, state legislative bills, and you'll see the list of all the bills that are going to be coming up. Go down the list, read the headlines, maybe read the ones that you think you might be interested in, and come a little bit early, fill out the sheet, and let your voice be heard for our representatives of the state.
Thank you, Mr. Fontana.
Thank you.
Just in case y'all didn't hear that, it's on Tuesday, this next Tuesday, at 2:00 PM at City Hall is our annual, Swanee County's annual legislative delegation. Mr. Fury, thank you for helping those guys out there with that projector. Thank you, Mr. Fontana. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Welcome, sir. Name and address for the record.
Wayne Hanico, 1183 93rd Road. I'll make it short tonight because I'm sure everybody wants to get out of here tonight. Concerned citizens has been trying to tell you something positive every meeting, and tonight we're focusing this on the Sheriff's Department Emergency Management. I particularly focus on grants because that's money that we get that doesn't come out of our pocket. So, it comes out of the state funds or some other funds. So, just a few, I want to run very quickly some of the things that they've gotten in the last year. They got $130,000 from the Florida Sheriff's Association for command post upgrades, $2.1 million from the Florida Department of Emergency Management to stabilize areas from storm impact and upgrade our local stadium area, $500,000 in private funding to do projects that rebuild from Idalia and Helene. Hopefully, that's the end of that. $125,000 from another sheriff's office, actually, that's not a dollar donation. It's a donation of 25 portable 800 megahertz radios for the response team. And they've applied for almost $6 million in grants for hazard mitigation projects. Three major storms, two months, they do a darn good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanico.
I was 1458100, 5555, Live Oak.
Thank you, sir.
Tapping into Mr. Fontana on the Chris Ann Hall event, I'm very pleased to announce that we actually had one of our elected officials attend that constitutional information event. I was very disappointed to see there was only one, including not only elected, but none of the appointed as well. It was very informative. I think we got to reprieve right now because of the national election, but it's still important for us to know and hear. I need to hear it over and over. Older I get, I need to hear things over and over to enact on and know what my rights are. And, I mean, you guys, everything y'all do is supposed to be based on the Constitution. Y'all sworn to it. So, it just, it was disappointing. I'm not getting on to y'all this time. I just was hoping to see more of a turnout from, and I also invited all the city people as well. And again, we only had one shining star that showed up. So, and Mr. Fontana mentioned on the, I miss Branford though, I didn't think he invited Branford. But I did put it on the social media in Branford, so I don't know if that showed up. But Mr. Hanico, Mr. Fontana, no, Mr. Hanico mentioned about the bills coming out, and Fontana mentioned about the bills, Hanico mentioned the sheriff. That's what sparked my thoughts. I wouldn't have planned on doing this, but it's important. HB, there's a Representative Rudman, he proposed, submitted House Bill 31. And what it is, is to, for the legislators to remove the infringements that the state has on the citizens' constitutional rights, spare arms, right? And according to the Senate President, President Al Britton and our Speaker of the House, Perez, the reason that they are not going to do it this year, again, is because our sheriffs do not want us to have a right to protect ourselves, all right, with any way we want to, which is constitutional. It's our sheriffs, and please, everybody's got to hear this, prove me wrong, contact our sheriff, contact the Sheriff Association, let them know that we deserve to protect ourselves as they protect their families, all right? The sheriff and the deputies and police officers and sworn officers are allowed to carry any way they want, pretty much what they want, to protect their families and innocent people. So, anyway, HB 31 and its Sheriff's Association, according to the legislative officers that are blocking us.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else present from the public wishing to speak tonight? Seeing none, we will close public comment. I have a, item number seven is a time-specific item, so we'll jump down to that. Item number seven reads that 5:35 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing, consider closing all rights and interests of the county in Louisiana Avenue, beginning at the south boundary of lots 62 and 63, Platt of Dallin Park, and continuing south to the south boundary of lots 90 and 91, Platt of Dallin Park, all lying in Section 8, Alden Township 3, range south, Township 3, South Range 11 East, Swanee County, Florida. Mr. Ron Meeks.
You swear firm testament, you give us cause to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but true stuff, you got it?
I do. Mr. Chairman, board members, I think it was two meetings ago, we had a application. It was on the Ralph J. Platt property. This property, this Louisiana Avenue should have been contained in that original description. This ends up being the western boundary of that property. There were several north-south roads and east-west roads and alleyways described in there. Louisiana is the western boundary. It was not in the original description that the board adopted as part of their closing. So, this would be a separate resolution that would just specifically close Louisiana Avenue, and this is contained all within the boundaries of the property that they own.
Okay. Same as the last one, same owners owns all the contiguous lots?
Correct.
Won't affect access to any other landowner?
The front, the front lots, front 250, that's why it goes from their south boundary side.
Okay. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this specific matter? I'll close public comment. Any board discussion on the matter? Questions, comments, concerns? Or do I have a motion to adopt?
So, move.
Have a motion to adopt the resolution by Commissioner Perkins. Have a second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Close public here. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Back to your agenda. We are on the consent agenda, which has items 2 through 6. Any questions, comments, or concerns from board members in regards to the consent agenda?
All for a motion.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Consent agenda items 2 through 6, by Commissioner Hale. Have a second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Consent agenda carries five to zero. Item number eight, constitutional officers. Discuss the return of excess revenues for the year 2023, 2024 fiscal year. Mr. Baker, welcome, sir.
Okay. It was all right, Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, this past year, we had $119,249.46 in excess, in excess revenues. It's where that we are requesting to be able to retain $18,000 of that to take and use for the Florida Authenticator and a Florida Analyzer for our offices, and it would also help the sheriff's office as well. It's where that if you allow us to do that, to retain those $18,000, it's where we would still return $101,249.46. I didn't know if y'all had any questions or if you needed further explanation of what those two things are. I got one, my DOT, and they provided me a more specific explanation, if y'all want to hear that.
Yeah.
I would.
Yes, sir. I've talked to you before tonight, but maybe some of the others have not. So, any board members, Mr. Perkins would like to?
It's the Florida Authenticator allows us to implement a multi-factor authentication to remain CGIS compliant. It also improves the ability to take and manage who has access to our system, ensuring that only authorized personnel can view sensitive information. A lot of times, it's like with some of our stuff, you know, adoption, guardianships, and a lot of those types, you know, things involving minors. It's where we have to, there are different levels of protection that we have to have in order that, you know, your judge and your attorneys and some of your agencies is where they will have complete access. Other agencies is where they have to see a partially redacted form, others that'll be fully redacted just because of the sensitive nature of the information. So, this allows that. It also asks for, it provides for a dual authentication system to give us greater protection, so it's more difficult to hack into the system.
Okay, good.
The other thing, the Florida Analyzer gives us the ability to monitor our network in real time, helping us to spot and respond to potential threats quickly. By using these tools, we can better protect our data, comply with regulations, and keep our community safe. Using these security products is essential in securing our data, our digital resources, and maintaining the public trust. It's that this, the first one, the Florida Authenticator, it helps us to meet that CGIS security requirements that were put in place in October. So, it's a requirement our office had to do, and again, it works both for our office and also with Sam's, and helping us be compliant with that. So, didn't know if y'all had any further questions or not, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Is there, oh, Mr. Perkins?
I'm good. To help to secure our data, to keep from being hacked, and how we have a problem with, I think that's a good thing. It's going to be able to help serve the community as well, the shared department as well.
That, and I think it's some of the new requirements you talked about, to get us in compliance with the new state requirements, protecting some of that information. As he said, some of it's, even though it's public, some of the children's names and whatnot can be redacted, so that it's protected and provide another layer of security, so that the public, random public people can't gain access to that kind of information.
Sure.
Any other questions from board members? Or from Mr. Baker?
Mr. Mr.
Do you need a motion to approve this?
I guess it just allows us to, so it's $18,000, and it's rule, but they can refer to $101,249.46.
So, I got a motion by Commissioner Perkins to approve your request.
Second.
I got dual. I got a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Still on constitutional officers. Welcome, Sheriff.
Just a quick update. I guess everybody knows the weather we got coming. Our biggest concern, actually, is the, you know, the, we got rain now, and is it going to get cold enough for it to turn to ice on the roadway? So, just everybody be careful. Now, DOT, they're having, we've put saw or some, or some sand on the different overpasses and bridges to help us out, because they're the ones that are going to freeze over first. Another thing is we got a warming station there at the Coliseum. It's open up at 4 till 8 tomorrow. So, anybody that knows, anybody that may need it, you know, they can send it to the Coliseum. Now, the jail lobby, we also have it open, you know, also for they can come to. So, anybody that has any issues or problems with being out of cold, you know, we got a couple of places for them. Coliseum, we got some cots, some water, and MREs there for them, and so forth. But just kind of pass word out to the public. We've been, we've been putting it on social media, just in case anybody needs a place to go, because it's going to get cold for the next two or three days. So, just kind of pass word, everybody. Thank you.
One question for Sheriff. I know the jail staff with some type of security, the Coliseum, is there some type of staff?
Yes, we got, I got some deputies out there that's going to man that.
Okay. So, someone wants to go there, there should be some type of safety and security?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff.
Okay. 4 to 8 at the Coliseum, but now the jails, I mean, it's always there, you know, for the jail lobby.
Is that 8 AM or 8 PM tomorrow?
8 AM.
8 AM, okay.
We just, I mean, and we can extend it, you know, we just kind of see how it all kind of plays out and all, just kind of see what this weather does and all.
If folks are there, I know you won't kick them out.
Exactly, yeah, exactly right, yes.
Hundred percent, I understand. All right. Thank you, all right. Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone have any questions for Sheriff?
No, good.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Any other constitutional officers present wishing to speak? I don't see any staff, any staff items tonight? Nope. Commissioner, any commissioner items? County Attorney, I know he'll talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items, actually. The first is my apologies specifically to Mandy, because she's the one who said, make sure you remember to do this, and then I did it. And it's sitting on my printer at the office. In accordance with what the sheriff pointed out, and the governor has passed a state of emergency regarding the winter storm, just to free up funds in case we do have emergency situations tomorrow morning. It's sitting on my printer at home, but I'd asked the board to authorize the chairman to execute a local state of emergency effective as of today, even if we sign it tomorrow. And the governor has issued an executive order declaring a state of emergency in the area on that. So, out of an abundance of caution, we probably ought to have it in case. I have lived, I grew up in the Northeast, so there are some worst-case scenarios that may happen where that state of emergency could be handy.
Any questions or comments about approving a local state of emergency for, was it winter storm? What's the name of it? Is it? Was it?
Enzo.
Enzo, okay. Questions, comments about that?
No.
Any motion to approve? I have a motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Mobley?
Perkins.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you. And then the second, Mr. Chairman, is not Friday last week, but Friday week before that, the Audit Committee met and made a recommendation to hire the, what's the name of the firm, Eric? I'm sorry, you've got my contract.
Powell &amp; Jones?
Powell &amp; Jones. Yes, to hire Powell &amp; Jones based upon the scoring criteria. That was an open meeting held here. So, that was the, that's their recommendation to the board, that the board go ahead and approve entering into negotiations with Powell &amp; Jones as the winning bidder for that particular RFP. I went ahead and took the initiative with the encouragement of that committee to go ahead and enter into negotiations with Powell &amp; Jones in accordance with that RFP. We've done so. It conforms substantially with what was in the request for proposals, that contract executed by the Powell &amp; Jones folk. I've left it with Eric, so that's ready to be executed. So, just bringing it to the board's attention to, if it meets the requirements of the board, and if y'all have any questions, and me, one, to go ahead and accept the proposal from the auditing committee to enter into negotiations with Powell &amp; Jones as the recommended servicer, or as the recommended auditor for the county. And then, just so we can go ahead and get them going, that contract's ready to go. So, then second would be to enter into the contract.
So, I was on the auditing committee, just for a quick highlight reel for you guys and anybody in the public that would want to know. Powell &amp; Jones is our current county auditor, have been for many years. There was a RFP put out, Request for Proposals, to anyone, open to anyone that would like to bid. There were three respondents, one being our current provider. I think they go by Reliance, CPAs, DBA, Powell &amp; Jones, I think.
Correct.
They're, basically, they submit their qualifications, and each one of them submitted a book an inch thick. But their annual price, and Mr. Baker, correct me if I'm wrong, was $110,000. And then the second place was Moore, James Moore, and they were at $140,000. And the third place was a, pretty much a nationwide firm, that was at $795,000 as an annual fee. So, obviously, the 795 was out, seven times more, six times more than the other two folks. And the, the high score was not by much, but was Powell &amp; Jones as the recommended firm over the Moore firm. But I don't remember the points, but it's public information. That meeting was publicly advertised, publicly open. It was held here. Anyone from the public could have came. Anyway, that's the highlight reel of that. Need your good results, if you will. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Morrison or myself?
No.
Or do I have a motion to approve the auditing committee's recommendation?
So, move.
To go with Powell &amp; Jones. I have a motion by Commissioner Perkins.
I see it.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Do you need, you said you needed two motions?
Yes.
Want the other one?
The second one is, I've gone ahead and done the contract. And just so the public's aware of the reason for fast-tracking the contract, is Powell &amp; Jones, they do the county audits, and the county has to get them, the auditor, certain information to allow the audit to be done timely. That information is due like February 15th, so it's like now. So, that's the reason for needing to get the contract in place as quickly as we could. I got a signed copy of the contract back this morning, and so I think if it all, if it's with the approval of the board to go ahead and enter into the contract, so that way all of our county officers get the go-ahead to get all their documents together, and so that way we can comply with our end of that particular contract.
For the slow folks in the room like myself, let me dumb that down a little bit. Historically, the county always turns in their financial information to Powell &amp; Jones, which is our current auditor, by that date. We decided, because we haven't done it in quite some time, Clerk Mr. Baker, to go out for RFP kind of late in the year. It rolled around. Here we are, approaching February 15th. They're like, well, if we are the winning bidder, we need that stuff pretty quick to do y'all's audit, which takes them several months, right? Anyway, so there's no hanky panky or whatnot. That's, it's normal business for them to get that information in the middle of February, so hence the fast-track. We decided to do the RFP kind of late in the year for us to turn over fiscal. So, here we are. They're waiting on them, hence his streamline in that. Sorry, I didn't mean to insult you.
Hey, listen, I'm all for.
Attorneys tend to talk really highly and really quickly, so my wife is one, so I have to like, slow down, dumb it down for me.
None of that made any sense. I'm going to say it better. I get that at home all the time.
Any questions for myself, for Mr. Morrison on that? You want to state your motion that you need, Mr. Morrison?
Just a motion to authorize the chairman to execute the contract between the county and Powell &amp; Jones.
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner White to accept or approve, second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Morrison, you got anything else?
No, I'm sure I'll be talking during the Sincere Care presentation, but nothing for purposes of my time.
Okay. Consultants, any consultants present tonight wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to general business. General business item number nine is discussion with possible board action agreement with Sincere Care Foundation Incorporated. Hey, it's back to you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Ms. Harris. Also, name and address for the record.
Chanel Harris, 625 East Tennessee Streets, LA, S. Florida. 323, you're right.
Well, Mr. Morrison, you want to?
Sure, I'll lead the charge. Sure. Mr. Chairman, this has been coming along since the middle of last year to enter into a contract with Sincere Care to help them open a women's clinic over at the old soccer fields here in Swanee County. As the board is aware, I've checked in with you guys several times as we've gone through these negotiations as to how that would look, most recently, last meeting. And so, pursuant to those instructions that I got from the board, we've gone forward with negotiations and put together a package, which I think protects the county as much as we can. It gives, it does ultimately give the land to Sincere Care, if they are successful, and, which we hope they are, operating a women's clinic to care for women who need healthcare here in the county and throughout the region. And so, basically, I'll leave it at that. So, what this agreement does is it puts a price of $500,000 on the land, secures it with a mortgage, gives certain benchmarks for the Sincere Care to meet in order to get that mortgage basically canceled or satisfied by the county. Specific benchmarks include, they have to be fully built within three years, within eight years, so another five years after they have to open. They need to be in continuous care, continuously open during that period of time, providing the required care to women here in Swanee County. And again, it's all detailed, much more granularly in the various agreements that are attached, but that's the skeleton of it. So, with that, I'll yield, Mr. Chairman, and defer to Ms. Harris in terms of the need for this particular facility.
What was yours?
So, I think I've been here a few times. We're really excited to be partnering with the county. We are looking to open something that is one of a kind and very unique, and what we feel like will be the model and the standard for healthcare across America. Essentially, what we will be building is a facility for all women. We will have a primary care, behavioral health, breast care for. We will have a primary care, behavioral health, breast care for women who are eligible. But in addition to that, we will be seeking an advanced birthing center accreditation, so we will be able to provide birthing services to the women within this region that are currently traveling at least an hour for care and for delivery. Since my last visit, we have actually brought on board a perianatologist. And for some of us women, we know what that is, but for those of us who don't, that is a doctor that specializes in high-risk deliveries. They are extremely hard to come by, and to have one that is committed to this community is huge. What that means is that women who are now traveling to Gainesville to seek care can now seek care right here in their community. Now, we will not deliver high-risk, we will not deliver high-risk women at ours facility, but we will improve the outcomes of mom and baby by having that specialty clinician here in this community. And so, a lot of what we're doing in terms of bringing care to the community, bringing physicians to the community, partnering with academic institutions like FSU School of Medicine to recruit and bring doctors to this community, it's not just bringing them in, but making them a part of this community. And so, the partnership that we're doing tonight is huge, because it allows us to incentivize doctors to come here, it allows us to be able to bring state-of-the-art mammography machines here, it allows us to bring specialists that you would typically have to go to Gainesville or Jacksonville to see, to come here, and not just serve the women in Swanee County, but then surrounding counties that are also traveling that far. I've told the county, and I say it today, my roots are rural, spent a lot of my time in Madison, Florida, and so this is a passion project for us. We're just really committed to seeing improvements for our women and bringing access to high-quality care here.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Any Commissioners having questions for Ms. Harris?
Ms. Harris, I just have one. As far as the funding for this, do you have that secured already, or...
So, we're working on our capital stack. We do have investment interests. We do not want to go that route, because when you have investment interest, then it limits some of the things that you can do in terms of reinvesting into your facility and some of the things that we would like to do. But we're working very closely with Senator Simon's office, we had several meetings set up on yesterday, so it is a priority. But we're, we have some things, some funding that's very close to closing, we feel very good about.
Would you have any disagreement to, I know we've got in a contract here with three years, you have to be completely built in three years, or the property comes back to the county. And I don't have a problem with that. I would just like to see some benchmarks in between now and year three, that you've pulled a building permit in year one, or such things as that, to show that we're making progress towards the end goal of having it there. And that's just so the county's not sitting here, and I hope you're successful with it, I really do. I don't have anything against what you're doing, I'm just trying to protect the taxpayers of the county. And if we let you go for three years, and then nothing happens, and two months before the three years is up, we get it back to the county, well, that's three years the county lost with that. So, that's the reason I'm asking.
So, I'd like to just say this, to kind of ease your, ease some of your mind. This is, Swanee County for us is the, what we see as being like the flagship, but we're actually working on a system, right? And so, we're working on a study and a feasibility plan for Gaston County as well. So, we're looking not just to do something in Swanee County, but in a few of the other rural counties, kind of staggered, but Swanee County is our priority. So, we're not gonna sit for three years and wait to build. Our, Swanee County is a part of a much bigger vision for improving the health outcomes in rural communities. We also, for personal reasons, I mean, we've invested a lot of our own time and resources. We'd like to see something stood up very quickly. We actually were meeting today about bringing something in more of a mobile form to start bringing in services, getting people acclimated to what it is that we're doing, as well as that also drives revenue as well for us, and so that's sort of low-hanging fruit. But I think that it's important to note that this is, this is a big part of the vision, but it's not the entire vision. And so, we're not gonna be sitting for three years and a month before, say, we can't build.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Perkins.
Ms. Harris, speak to the thing that you're already doing to move as far as for your plans, that you were speaking to Mr. Bailey, his firm, to gather things up, and also the rendering that you've already gotten, those things that you've gotten in works now, as far as your building, to move towards getting a building permit. Will you speak to that, please?
So, we've met with Greg Bailey, we've also worked with Nick...
Gassler.
Nick Gassler, I mispronounced his last name. We have the schematic drawings, you know, we needed to know where we were gonna go, so that we can continue to proceed forward. We've had our pre-application meeting with the USDA, which was about three hours, we've met with the area office, as well as the state office. We've also met with several, the Florida Community Loan Fund, that's very interested in providing some sort of funding on the capital stack. We have some ideas for some preliminary funding for, to start on phase one, phase two, so we've sort of phased it out, so that we're not waiting until the back end for, to have all of the money to do it, so.
And that's fine with me, I'm good with that. I just would like to see it written into the contract, that in, say, twelve months, you're gonna have the mobile, whatever you've got going there, the mobile, just something to show that we're moving forward on the project.
Okay, I mean, I'm not opposed, but I, during our, some of our meetings with Greg Bailey, we do recognize that there's going to be some changes, especially around EPA and the length of time it takes to get permits, and so, they cautioned us, if we didn't have certain things done, and a part of that was disagreement by a certain time, it could lengthen the process. And so, I'm a little cautious about committing to certain dates, because I, we can't control certain parts of the process, especially without really understanding, meeting with Greg's team, because he did, that was a couple of months ago, he was saying that we would need to start certain things, but that would require, that would require us to finalize this part, and that was before the holiday. So, there is some, some rules and some laws that are gonna change before, by the end of the year, that could potentially impact some of the timelines that we thought we'd have prior to coming into this year. So, I'm, I mean, I don't have a problem with benchmarks, because obviously, we're committed, I think we've shown by being in this community well over a year and joining important committees like Healthy Swanee, to understand what the needs are in the county, that we're meeting them, and meeting with each of you, that we're committed to getting this project going. And I think we have some of the right people from the state level, and some people that we've met on the national level, too, to get this done. There's a huge commitment to rural, there's a lot of commitment to rural health, and I think there's an even bigger commitment to reducing maternal health outcomes in rural communities.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
Ms. Harris, also, speak to that, getting the property, how that would help, allow you to move a little faster and move on to getting things started.
So, even when we met with, like, the USDA, not leveraging the property, but having the property and being able to show the public-private partnership agreement, the commitment from the county, shows a big, a level of commitment to funders. And so, I think from a financial aspect, it's big, right? It shows the commitment from the county. But it also allows us to, again, hire high-quality doctors, it allows us to incentivize those doctors, it allows us to purchase certain equipment, it allows us to operate at twenty-four-seven capacity, but, you know, with some specialized clinicians, like NICU nurses, which are needed, but they're not that cheap, right? So, having this partnership lowers our debt, right, and allows us to reinvest into the facility in a, for the long term.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. White, what kind of benchmark, if we're gonna incorporate that into the contract, specifically, what is it that you're looking for that to say?
Well, she's talking about a mobile thing, so I don't assume she has to pull a permit for that. I would just like to see some, like, after twelve months, we've either got engineering, pulled a building permit, something to show the ball is moving forward. And then, in year two, we broke ground, whatever the case may be, it's just some way to show that we're just not sitting here till the end of three years and in the last couple of months.
Forward progress.
Yeah, just some forward progress, that's all I'm looking for.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Perkins.
To Commissioner White, being in the construction field, being a contractor, it is not on commercial, it may take you over a year to get a permit pulled.
And I'm not just saying a year, Mr. Perkins, it can be eighteen months. I just want to see something before we get to three years, is where I'm coming from.
Okay.
I mean, we can come up with any kind of schedule you guys want to come up with, in my opinion. I just want, for my personal, I just want to see some, something moving the ball forward.
Can I make a recommendation, then, which may satisfy what everybody wants to do here? It would still need to be an amendment to the contract, but I do understand everything. The date issues that Ms. Harris is bringing up here, is we could do an eighteen-month look-in, which just says where we at, and are we moving forward, and gives us the opportunity to see what they're doing in good faith to get it done.
I don't want to put words in Commissioner White's mouth, but, I mean, I think that that's exactly what he's asking, that's what, I mean, I would like to see that, too, because, I mean, I think we've, in the past, we've done some development agreements with some companies, and we don't, we, you know, we give them twenty-four months, and we don't hear a word until the twenty-third, and then it's like, hey, I need another six months, like, well, where you been? What have you been doing?
Well, I understand, but that's why, so, this is just the problem with writing contracts, right? So, when we write a contract, we have to say, I need A, B, and C. And what I'm hearing, and y'all, please correct me if I'm wrong, is due to the nature of commercial contracting, it's hard to put that down in a dead-set timeline here, like, that you're gonna have the, so, maybe a way of doing that would be of satisfying y'all's questions, as well as, but not harming the project here by requiring something that maybe they can't do, is we put in an eighteen-month look-in, which just says they have to show reasonable progress towards meeting their completion goals at, to make the three-year mark. And so, if they can't show that there's been any progress made, well, then that could give us grounds to move forward with the reversion, but if they can show up, it's like, here's all the permits, here's everything that's going on, here's everything...
Here's our engineering plans, here's our architectural designs so far, like, here's our folder of...
And to be, in fairness to Ms. Harris and her organization, the language that I would use would be to show reasonable progress, and so, and that's to restrict our ability, let's say we have a new commission by then, who for some reason, like, whatever, we want to get rid of this. No, like, as long as they show they're moving forward in a good-faith basis, then we can't come back, do you know what I'm saying? But I think a look-in would provide that protection that you're looking for, Chairman, or Mr. White, but also allow for the flexibility that you're talking about the need.
So, I guess you're saying about doing a in-progress, like we do in in-progress report?
I would give you notice, folks, like, hey, where you at?
Yeah, you can do in-progress report in eighteen months, somebody got there, Commissioner White, and we can do that, I mean, that's something that's common in the construction domain, the in-progress.
And I'm not saying we gotta sink it, and I'm not trying to do that. I'm just saying, in eighteen months, we need to know where are we at, do we have any funding? Do, are we moving forward? And if we are, that's great, you know? And if she needs a little more time, and she says, hey, I got, I got this coming, we can look at that, too. I'm not trying to stop the project, I just want to see that we're moving forward.
There's also, excuse me, there's also, on the bylaws of our foundation, for each one of our sites, there is a position on our board for the counties that we do have partnerships for representative. So, I think that that could also allow for another layer of transparency, where we can figure out who can be that appointee, and because we have regular meetings that talk about funding and progress of the buildings, based on the structure of our organization, I think that might bring you a little bit of another level of transparency, having someone that, and so, it's a little bit, it's a little bit more than a look-in, because we have quarterly meetings.
I'm good with that, that's great.
I think it would be a great courtesy to our community and our citizens for someone to come on a regular, you know, every three months, six months, and just give an update.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Commissioner Perkins.
I want to say, too, I don't want to see Commissioner White to hold their firm, to go out and put in a mobile unit on the property out there, because if you're doing construction out there, doing site prep with equipment and stuff running on there, I don't think you'll have room to be able to set a mobile unit up there and to do, do that work in there, be working doing site prep, and then, so you gotta have the utilities to be put in there as well, because you, maybe moving that soil down, dropping that down. So, I don't want to see them, say, you gotta have that out there, and you not be able to, because when you select a contractor, you know, he come and fence up, and then you're not, may want to be able to get in there, because for safety purposes, we can get in by the herd, so that's...
So, the mobile unit that we're actually considering is like an actual mobile drop, mobile unit that can go to different areas, different counties.
It's got all the utilities contained in it.
It's all contained, and the...
Like a blood mobile type thing.
Correct. So, the, it's, it's like a doctor's office that's mobile.
Oh, wheels.
So, it wouldn't be on the site per se, and it's a lot easier to permit.
Commissioner White.
If we're gonna have a Commissioner on their board, I'm perfectly fine with that, as long, you know, if we're looking at it, one of us is looking at it, I'm fantastic with that.
It's in our bylaws, I'm happy to afford it to have.
So, and if that's fine, that's fine, I just want...
With me, it is.
Well, I just want to be clear with that. That doesn't change, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, I just want to be clear about this.
I see what you're coming.
If you put somebody on the board, that's great, and that person comes and tells you guys, nothing's happening, well, we still have the three-year issue that you're raising here. And so, if you're okay with that, that's fine, I just, that doesn't alleviate that concern that you brought up.
No, I still won't, I mean, it helps my feelings with it, but I still would like to see an eighteen-month mark, or a look-in, or are we getting anywhere? Yes, I would like to see that.
Ms. Harris, does that, I mean, you've heard the discussion here, I want to make sure it works.
I'm okay with a look-in, I would like a little bit more, and I make sure, I don't know if it's you talking to our...
I'll get with Mr., with your attorney, but just to be transparent here, the language that would be intended to be used would be an eighteen-month look-in via a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners, to show a good-faith, reasonable attempts to be able to satisfy the three-year completed construction deadline. And so, and it's like, and it would be probably that short.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions? I have a couple concerns, and let me say this before I say them. I don't think there's anybody in this room that is against your project, I think we all want to see you get to the finish line, because I know it'll be a huge asset to the community, not just the women, but to the men who love those women, and them, seeing them get care, and, you know, the children and the babies. But this is, this is a business deal, and we have to also look at worst-case scenarios. And us, us, this board being steward of the taxpayers' dollars or assets, land in this case, we have to protect those in case the worst-case scenario happens. Mr. Klepper, I see you coming, so we'll get to public comments in a minute.
I've got others.
At any rate, one of the concerns I had, and this is really for Mr. Attorney, I read the legal description, the only thing in there, and I would ask Ms. Harris, or you to ask, or we can ask Ms. Harris if this would affect her, the easement there is, the only easement that I see subject to is the ninety-foot along the northern boundary, which is along the highway for Forte Power and Light. The county would still retain ownership of the, let's just say, eighteen, seventeen-odd acres to the south behind this particular piece of property. I would like to see the county, if the Board so agrees, and Ms. Harris so agrees, have a subject-to, a utility easement along the eastern side. Should we need drainage, whether it be stormwater, or fiber, or internet, or whatever, so that if we need to run utilities to our remaining property, we have access to do that off of Seventy-second Trace along that eastern side, which is already kind of steep, less desirable to build on anyway. Just so we're not cut off from getting utilities to what we're left with in the Just so we're not cut off from getting utilities to what we're left with in the back.
Yes.
60-foot, or, you know, nothing big, just, just whatever the standard, 30, 60-foot utility easement along that eastern side, which is opposite of 795.
I understand, the only question that I don't know the answer to, Ms. Harris, is, I know you guys are moving forward with building setup, would an easement like that mess up what you guys are planning right now? I'm just saying, before, do we have, do we need to go back to the drawing?
I would, and I don't, I'm not 100% sure of the city or county's setback requirements, but I would think that there are some of something, so some of those are going to be setback requirements anyway, so that, you know, 20-foot setback, or whatever, so if we get a 30 or 60, and we got several engineers in the room, so I don't, maybe they could tell us, hey, your standard utility easement is 60-foot, or 30-foot.
You can get by with 20-foot.
So 30, 30-foot, if we retain 30-foot utility easement, and the city has a 20-foot setback, well, technically, we're only going to be 10-foot out of the way.
So for the legal there, you'd want to reserve a 30-foot?
I just think that would be smart business on our, we don't cut ourselves off.
30-foot easement?
To get utilities back to the rest of our property.
For utilities.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can add to that also, I spoke with Mr. Wainwright, owned the property adjacent to it, and one concern was, I think he also spoke to Mr. Scott as well, he's all well and good with Ms. Harris getting the property, he's been very instrumental, instrumental in talking with her and gathering with several things. On the west side of that prop, east side of the property, there used to be an old track that ran from up to Georgia, back to Lautre County, he took that track out, but there's a wedge, high shape in there, that he's concerned about, that if that's on the property that she's getting, he wants to be able to have that piece of property, the county can still have that property, but he wants to be able to have access to it, because that property there is going to be able to alleviate water from standing on his property back there, that's going to be an easement to move that water back to the, those whales. So he want to be able to maintain that. I think he had also spoke with Commissioner White, Commissioner White had told him sometime, was per his, his say, thought that property was here already, and he had begun to excavate some dirt out of there, and he was said he was stealing dirt.
If I can be heard as to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
All due respect to Mr. Wainwright, we don't need to be in the business of guaranteeing how county property's going to act to third parties, like, do you see what I'm saying here? Because we can only put, I mean, we're going to have to amend, like, that's just asking for a whole lot of trouble that we don't need to deal with. I will say that the common law is, is that, and the reason drainage laws exist, is you can't artificially change the natural flow of water. So that's where water would flow naturally anyway, part of Ms. Harris's design criteria is going to have to be a way to allow for that flow to continue, but it's a remarkably bad idea to incorporate into our documents guaranteeing third parties' property rights that we're conveying to somebody else. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Well, what he's concerned, what he didn't want, that, the property she had, and then where the contract is written up, that if it is in the property she's getting, that she cannot allow him any of that property, because where it's written up, it'd be a violation of what we have in the contract.
I think, Mr. Perkins, I hear you, I wasn't aware of this situation, but I think, because I haven't talked to Mr. Wainwright about this issue, but I think what we, and Mr. Attorney, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think what we need to do, prior to signing this legal description, if there is something out there we need to be aware, made aware of, maybe we need to obtain a survey to determine where this, where is this, where's this piece of property, or this pie-shaped property you talked about?
Right.
That where's this at, and how does this correlate? If it's nowhere near this 6.84 acres that we're, you know, deeming to you guys to use?
Then we don't worry about it.
Then we don't worry about it, that's our issue to tackle later on, because it's still be on the property that we're retaining in the back.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Harris, her firm already had a survey done.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of it?
I don't know.
I do, I didn't bring it with me.
So let's.
But I, I cannot emphasize enough how bad of an idea it is for us, we, and how we manage our property with third parties, we cannot be concerned with guaranteeing the convenience of surrounding property owners.
I understand.
Like, it's a.
I was talking about utility easement for us.
Oh, no, that I can understand, but I understand Mr. Wainwright's concerns, but if title to the property is vested in us, then title to the property is vested in us, sorry. But if we start guaranteeing third-party rights, especially in a property we're deeming to somebody else, only bad things happen.
So in other words, we can't give her this piece of property, but, Ms. Harris, this guy here.
Right.
Mr. Joe has access to use that, and come on to that, and do whatever he wants to with it, like, that's a no-no.
Yeah.
I'm doming it down again for you.
It's bad.
Mr. Chairman.
I got it.
My understanding, Ms. Harris, the property we're talking about for her organization is, is up by the road. The property I think Mr. Wainwright is concerned about is the south, or the north part, I don't know, south part of the property.
South part.
So two different, two different areas.
Well, you speak, southward, you know, you speak of the back part of where the whales are, right?
Right.
But no, he's always talking about the west side of it, but the property she's acquiring is the property, is fenced in, but it's on the other side of the fence, back toward this property, you know, that old tracks to be in there, it's going to be a old track in there.
Right.
Well, that's that piece of property there she's talking about, is, if hers is being contained inside that fence, then it doesn't affect her.
Right, right.
And so that's something we can deal with later. But that's, he was concerned about was, if the property that, if her boundary markers go out there into that property, then that's going to be, you know, he was having concern about if that being given to her, then he's going to be totally out of it, you know.
Again, my understanding is the property would be up on the hill, not, not in the valley.
But.
Or rural corridor.
Yeah.
So, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. So we can do the easement, Mr. Morrison?
Yeah, I would just.
Ms. Harris, that 30-foot easement along that eastern side won't affect you if we were to need to run a stormwater drain line down there, that won't affect, that shouldn't affect you, because I know there's going to be setbacks anyway, that you can't build right on the property line.
Right.
Okay. My other concern.
Mr. Chairman, let me.
Go ahead.
One thing I would just ask, Ms. Harris, you've got North Florida working on this for you, is that correct? NFPS, Mr. Bailey?
Well, yeah, we've worked with them, we've started asking for them.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm not trying to disrespect you and your knowledge of easements and utility lines and setbacks and all that other stuff, but I would probably just want to run this by Mr. Bailey and the engineers to make sure that we're not compromising her ability to use the property. So, I understand, Mr. Chairman, what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't want to compromise her ability whatsoever.
So I would just say, yes, subject to me confirming with Mr. Bailey, that that's not going to compromise the ability to.
Her site plan and her buildings are nothing, yes, that's not my intent, my intent is just.
Does that make sense, Ms. Harris? So, yeah, I, again, no disrespect, but on your behalf, I would want to check with Mr. Bailey, make sure that that works.
My other concern is, is, and again, I hope we can work through these, because I certainly want to see you get to the finish line, but my other concern is, is looking at the worst-case scenarios. So, and I don't want to hypothetical these whatsoever, because we could be here all night doing hypotheticals, right? My concern is, is how do we alleviate a situation occurring where none of us can predict the future, something dramatically changes, the project is done, we're vacating it, we're not doing it anymore on the 35th month, and it says in this agreement that as long as Sincere Care brings the county $500,000, the county will basically eliminate their mortgage.
Satisfy your, satisfy, because that pays off the note.
My concern with that is, and it kind of goes along with what Commissioner White was saying, is I don't feel comfortable totally giving, giving over a right to sale this property, should something change in the 35th, 30th, or the first month. If the county's given five, because I think the property is significantly worth more than $500,000 for seven, almost seven acres of highly commercial activity. Again, I'm 100% in support of her project, I want to see her get to the finish line, I think it'll be great for the whole community and surrounding areas, however, if the county was to get a check for $500,000 on the 35th month, I think that's a bad deal for the county, that's a bad deal for the taxpayers, to sell that piece of property for $500,000. I hope that doesn't happen, however, in the event that it would, I would be more comfortable with that number being more like $750,000. I do believe even at 750, if lenders or anyone's looking for equity or skin in the game, there's still skin in the game and money on the table, even at a $750,000 number. And again, I'm just a steward of the taxpayers' assets and dollars, if this was my own property, I would need something to protect my property in a worst-case scenario, in the event something happens to you, or something happens to your, or something, who knows, this, the new administration says, hey, we're cutting federal budget or the state budget by 50%, well, there's a lot of us are going to be in trouble. Nonetheless, I think that the property's significantly worth more than $500,000, I could be wrong, I've ran comps, I have a real estate license, I know real estate, I think we're putting a lot of skin in the game, three years from now, I think we will have substantially more skin in the game at a $500,000 number. At 750, if the project fails, hopefully it does not, that feels a lot easier to swallow in three years from now. That's just my take, that's my opinion, that's how I feel about it, that's why I'm here, is to tell people how I feel about the county's assets, that's where I'm at on it, like, that's, we've alleviated the utility easement, I'm not comfortable with 500 as a potential sale price, because it does say, should the county receive $500,000, they will satisfy their note of mortgage at any time over the next three years.
Eight years.
Eight, anytime over the next eight years, so, I think that number needs to be a little higher myself, just my opinion, open to suggestions, questions, comments, that's kind of where I'm at.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just, for the edification of everybody in the public, and I know I've already spoke about this with Ms. Harris before, so, kind of the easy way of getting around something like that would be a no-sale provision, like, you can't sell it, it can either satisfy at the end of the eight years, or the county gets it back, that's called a restraint on alien ability, an alien ability is the ability or the right to sell real property, that's highly disfavored under Florida law, is restricting, and so remember, because she needs to be the owner of this in order for her project to go forward, so we have to transfer title, only we are going to transfer title and reserve everything we're asking for is a mortgage. So, a non-sale clause is simply not feasible for something like this. The answer, because I'm sure that's a natural question, is why don't you just say, if it doesn't work, they got to give it back to the county, that, that's an illegal clause, so.
But at three years, I just want to make sure I'm clear, right, so at three years, we would have invested millions of dollars onto the property. At, at that point, we're responsible for the millions of dollars over, I mean, so, even if we, we wouldn't, because we're not developers, we're healthcare executives, right? If we sold it at $500,000, it doesn't satisfy the millions of dollars that we would have invested. So I think, I understand the trepidations, right, and I respect it 100%, but just on our side, what we're looking to invest and put on to the property is far beyond half a million dollars. So, by three years, you got a seven, eight-million-dollar building on a half-million-dollar lot, or seven, just add $250,000 more dollars to it, $750,000. I would venture to say that our investment and our liability at three years is far greater than that. And so, I understand, you know, 100% of what you're saying, but I think that at that three-year mark, at that 35 months, it, we are so far into it, that we're not going to just walk away, and set, even if we sold it at $750,000 or whatever, that's not going to make the difference of what it is that we're.
Right.
That we've invested into it, or that we're personally liable for, because we, somebody has to guarantee this stuff, too.
100%, and I 100, I agree with, I agree with everything you said 100%, that's also best case. Worst-case scenario, the permits, the, the funding, the grants, whatever, and I'm not sure what all avenues you're pursuing, or private sector, something goes south, something happens, like I say, federal administration cuts some budgets, the money's not there, the deal goes south, yes, you have $8 million in it, potentially, you've only spent $150,000. And then you, you have some buyer come along that says, hey, Sincere Care, I really want to put a shopping plaza there. There's nothing in this contract that says you can't sell it to anybody, and know that the county's only going to get 500. So what I'm saying is, I think today, that property's worth more than $500,000, and I'm okay, I'm okay.
That's the number that you all gave us, based off of.
100%, which, I don't know, who, where we got that number, but.
Mr. Gamble, I spoke with him about this.
Okay. I too spoke with Mr. Gamble today, and the 750 is still in the ballpark.
Oh, sure, I mean.
There's one acre lot selling for $100,000 on the highway, so, you know, I just think that there's some, there's some hypotheticals here where, this is a business deal, and in business deal, you have to cover every hypothetical, it's not a good deal for both of us, it's not a good deal. It needs to be good for you, it needs to be good for us. I think it'll be good for us if you get to the finish line. If you don't, I have to protect the county's assets, and I feel like taking, it doesn't matter, I won't say it doesn't matter, because it matters to you, but three years from now, taking $500,000 for this piece of property, no matter how much has been invested by the corporation, the company, or whatever, I think I'm shortchanging the taxpayer's font account.
So you need to see $250,000 increase.
I need to see 750 as that number for you to pay the county off.
Should we not build the building, is what you're saying?
No, in here, you have the right, tomorrow, if we do this tonight, it, tell me if I'm wrong.
I think her question, Mr. Chairman, was not the 750, it was, this doesn't change the fact that we would forgive it if she meant the benchmarks.
Correct, yeah, the 750's still waived, like, I don't, I'm not asking for money from you, the 750 would still be, like, repro-rated based on the 750, but the way I read the contract, if we sign this tonight, tomorrow, just like my bank, my bank can't tell me, no, Travis, we just don't do that yesterday for 500, you can't sell that for 750. So if we sign this today, there's no clause in here that says, because you just said no sale.
That's an illegal clause.
So there's no, a month from now, target comes along and says, we'll pay you $1.5 million for that piece of property, she can sell it, and we got to take 500.
Yes, sir.
I don't think that's a good deal for our county taxpayers.
Without moving one show.
Without moving one.
One show, sir.
So, I don't think you'll do that.
Yeah, we're not developers.
Nonetheless, money speaks, money speaks to all of us, if someone comes there and says, hey, I'll give you 2 million, well, that's a million-five in your pocket to go down the street, that you don't need money, you don't need USDA, you don't need a bank, you got a million-five now, you just don't have this piece of property, and 20 counties sold it for half a million. I think that's a bad deal, that's just me, there's five other guys up here, that may all disagree with me, but that's where I'm at.
Mr. Chairman, just so I understand this correctly, even if we move it to 750,000, and she meets all the requirements in three years, she still gets the property?
It's waived.
No, not in three years, again, the way the benchmarks work, just so we're clear.
You're right.
By three years, year three, she has to be built, there's no forgiveness, so, and then using a, then for five years, at two and a half years, half is forgiven, and then at the end of the five years, the remainder is forgiven.
You're right, I read it, I just, I'm stuck on this three years because of the moving-forward thing, but in the end, it's still, it's still going to be given to you, even if we put 750 in, is that right?
If all the parameters were met, the full 750 would be waived, just as it is.
So it's just a number on a piece of paper.
But even, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, and I hear what you're saying, but I just want everybody to hear what, I think the public is going to have a hard time wrapping their head around, is, like you're saying, let's say you move forward, you get a parking lot started, you know, we got 40 parking spots and some drainage out there, and then someone, like you say, comes along and says, hey, we can build something else here, maybe you're not getting things going the way you want it to go, and I'm not saying that you're not, just being devil's advocate here, and she's like, yeah, this ain't going to work, we need to bail, we need to get out. What you're saying, the way this is written up, is she can go ahead and sell it for whatever, as long as we get our 500 or 750, whatever.
Whatever number.
Yep, and move on. We're just trying to make it where you, we're not trying to vote you or do anything, we're just trying to be a good steward of the money for the people, that's all.
100%, I'm 100% supportive of the project. 100%. I'm 100% support the project. I want to see her get to the finish line. But I have to also be devil's advocate. And in case you don't.
Right.
Is it still a good deal for the, is the county still protected? I think we have some liability. Just my take as a, a whole country.
Well, you know, I'm not going to be about, I don't think it's going to be the difference if you, because in the end result, you have the property. So, if it had 250, 250,000 more added to it, I mean, I don't see a problem.
What, the question's for you, Ms. Harris. I mean, you hear them talking, but I'm going to be the one who has to prepare. Are you okay making that change, given what you've heard tonight?
So, they just...
To the 750?
To add 250,000. That's fine.
All right.
I feel, I feel much better at that number, should something happen over the next eight years. She's out. That's an easier pill for the taxpayer to sell that piece of property for, hypothetically.
Can I recap, Mr. Chairman, just to make sure I understand all the changes that the board wants, and to spare Ms. Harris from having to come up again? So, that way, if those changes are incorporated, we can just ideally put it on the consent agenda. If the, the changes that the board wants to see is incorporating into the, and where it would be put in, in is in the community improvement agreement, an 18-month look-in, where it would be that she would come to a Board of County Commission meeting and show good faith attempts to move construction forward. And really, that would all, that would need to be there on the deed. We would need to make a change, subject to checking with North Florida, that the county wants to reserve a 30-foot easement on the eastern boundary for utilities. And then, we want to change the amount of the mortgage to be, the mortgage note, as well as the mortgage that secures the note from 500,000 to 750,000. Is there anything I'm missing?
That's what I understand.
Anybody else? That's, that's how I'm hearing.
Ms. Harris, are you okay with those changes? Okay.
Is there anyone from the public have any questions, comments, or concerns for the board, or Ms. Harris, since we're in public meeting? Mr. Klepper? Welcome, sir. What you, what you got, boss?
Still Moses Klepper, 14581065, LiveVote. First thing, I love not being on the three-minute restriction.
Oh, I'm keeping it right here.
That's like, you can't do it on this. Second Chronicles 714, it says, "If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and forgive their sin and will heal their land." That's what I see these ladies doing, you know? So, I don't, nobody misconstruing anything I might say here to show that I'm against what they're doing. I'm 100% in favor of what they're doing, although I don't trust the government, all right? So, I know...
We know.
Yeah, yeah.
We know.
The, right now, you can't kill unborn baby any, any more than six weeks after the last menstrual cycle, all right? That could change in future administrations, all right? So, one concern I have, and I, I just, I'm a pretty good reader of folks. I don't believe they're in, their intentions are to become abortion planning. I just don't see that. I, I sense that that's the absolute opposite of what y'all...
When he's done, yeah, just keep a mental note. When he's done, you can, I know she's against that, and that's what she's wanting to say. Absolutely not.
But I would love, if, if possible, that being some of, since we're giving, we're gifting the half, I have no, or the three-quarter billion assessment value, and actually, you were reading my notes, because I had on here, I think, to protect us, it should be a million dollars, all right? I, I think 750 probably don't leave enough room to incentivize anybody to flip that property. But at a million, they sure could, you know? So, actually, I know he done wrote down 750, but, and I, I listened, and I read, some lawyer must wrote all that, too, because it was in some pretty, that gum. Anyway, but, but as it was written, it don't matter if it's $10 million. If, if they don't, they can't get hurt at 10 million, any more than they can get hurt at half a million. This contract on that number only potentially hurts us, all right? So, the million dollars, I'd, I'd be very content with, but I ain't going to push that. I'm, I'm glad to hear it go to 750. And I hope these ladies, of course, are intelligent enough to know this ain't hurting them. But the, the, I believe the county would be most, the taxpayers would be most protected with a million dollars on that number. But I'm going to leave that alone. Y'all decide, whatever. The, the, the thing that I wrote down, and these are just my notes before I got here, and, and I don't necessarily need anything done about it, but I wrote down that I realized this is a startup business. They've been incorporated less than a year ago. They're, again, with the scripture I read, I come from St. John's County. I don't know if y'all familiar with St. George's House or not. Well, I, I actually know people, females, that have gone through that, that establishment, and they got help, and they, they didn't abort the child with no intentions, sound like what y'all doing. They had no intentions. Some of them were, were from unintentional pregnancies. They, they gave birth to the child and had it adopted, and that's a wonderful thing. So, the, again, I'm in favor of that. The, the biggest thing I got against is the location. I, I think that that location could serve the, the community better as being sold as a commercial property, because we could, we could get that. And we're not going to get, they're 501(c)(3), they're, we're not going to get a tax base out of this, all right? Which I don't have, I don't want y'all to have to pay taxes. Y'all shouldn't have to pay taxes. But that property, I mean, if, if it was a piece of property over by the health department, it ain't worth a million dollars, all right? So, we're not losing that tax revenue that we're, we're probably going to, we will lose if, if they build that facility there. So, that's, that's my biggest thing, anyway. The, she threw out a number of $7 million, $8 million in, in construction costs. So, I, I, this, but again, worst-case scenario, if there's, I, I haven't heard any minimal requirements for facility square footage, you know? I'm a little bit concerned about that. The, the, let's see. Also, and I don't know how all this works. I haven't heard where the funds have come from. But let's say, again, they, they go take out a mortgage to pay off that $750,000, all right? If something happens, if it's not written in there a certain way, the county, the taxpayer could be stuck paying off that mortgage as well, all right? So, I, I think there needs to be something in there to protect us from that as well.
That's covered.
That is covered?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I missed that. Sorry. That's why y'all...
It says the county will not subordinate their mortgage to any other lender. So, therefore, we'd still be in first place. So, if they do get a mortgage, either one, the new mortgage company would have to pay us off, or take out a second mortgage, in which if they default on that second mortgage, the, the first mortgagee would have to be taken out, paid off, in order to foreclose. So, we're protected by not subordinating on mortgage to any other lender.
Thank you. And on the, on the note, the, on the utility easement, that was a concern too. I don't, I don't know if this pertains to this one, but on Swanee Valley, when I be, build my place, they required on the property line, each property owner to allow a 15-foot easement, so a 30-foot total. And again, you've already described, I don't know what it is, is it commercial? But also, and I've heard it a little bit said, I think Mr. Perkins said, where that big old hill needs to go. And, and I don't know if that's something that y'all control or not, but just, and I, I can't imagine Mr. Wayne right now wanting that dirt. But it would look a lot nicer for them if y'all wind up building it there. If that's all leveled out there, instead of big old hill being up there.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper.
Yes, Mr. Klepper.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Ms. Harris, you are welcome to address his comments.
I'll do my best to remember. So, the abortion. So, first and foremost, we are looking to deliver healthy babies. We are looking to take care of the moms and improve the maternal health outcome for these counties. Not only is it a, and I know we haven't gone through a full schematic, but it's not just the health facility and the birthing center, but we also have offices that will be located there. We've put in a food pantry to help, we spent a lot of time on the, working with the health department, talking to Brooke, on the Healthy Start, figuring out like what these families need. We will have, we're looking at relocating WIC and Healthy Start to this location, as well as having a, a satellite Hope Florida office, which is the first lady's initiative we've already had with Children's Family Services. So, this campus will be a place for women, but it's also resources to support them at all phases, specifically when they're pregnant, or just finding out they're pregnant, to make sure that they can have a healthy pregnancy and live a resilient life. So, hopefully that answers that question. Yes, we are a startup. But what I will say is that we've spent a year and a half studying our model, right? My partner here, Crystal Vivins, has well over 20 years of operation and finance experience. She has managed to finance this a billion-dollar health system. I, too, have consulted and been an executive in half-billion-dollar health organizations. While we're a startup, we bring a wealth of knowledge and experience, and we put together a, we put together a program and assembled a team that is ready to take a look at all of these hypotheticals, right? I think Crystal has probably is one of the most fiscally conservative people. So, when we do our revenue projections, which we've given to everyone here, they, they are very conservative. Every financial institution that we've met with has said that our financial projections are extremely conservative, conservative, but they're still very good. We did not go into this business because we want to get rich, right? Obstetrics is not it. We are going, it is high-risk with low reimbursement. We are going into this business because we are passionate about the women. We see organizations in larger, larger hospital systems where they're pulling out. A lot of the hospitals in the area are no longer doing obstetrics. Even right over Lake City, they closed their unit. When you look at these counties, these hospitals are pulling out, but they're still in need. The women still need care. And like I said before, most of my career was in DC. I'm originally from Tallahassee, but I spend every holiday, every Christmas, every summer, right in Madison County. My father's from Madison County. I have family here, there tonight from there. And so, I am committed to seeing the same amount of care that I champion for in big cities like Washington DC, putting together the programs that we saw were successful in those larger cities, bringing that, those specialists that we know can improve health outcomes. I'm looking to bring that here to serve the women in this community, because they absolutely deserve it. And I think that LiveVote is the perfect place, because not only can we serve Swanee County, we can support a bunch of women in the surrounding counties that are currently traveling just as far as the women in Swanee County. We chose that location. I mean, it would have been much easier, right, probably to select another location. But the reason why we were so adamant about that location is because, and I'm not sure if you've gone through the childbirth process or an emergency, but working in a hospital, being a mom that delivers, you know that it's not a matter of hours. It is a matter of minutes when there's an emergency. And so, the reason why we like that particular place that was available is because it gives us accessibility for emergency services, for women that might be traveling. And it may not seem like a long ways to get from I-10 to the health department. But in that small amount of time, we can lose mommy, we can lose baby. And so, we want it to be in that location because of the accessibility, and because we know, we're looking at, in this county, babies being born on the side of the road, babies being delivered by, by family members. And all of these things, our contributors, and it's, that location allows us to be able to, to service those women, to get emergency services in and out, and get them to a higher level of care as we work to stabilize and save them. So, that's why that location was very good because of the accessibility. I know that, you know, it's not a whole lot of jobs, right, that you see this, this organization bringing in. But what I can say is that it does support, like, growth, right? So, as we go out and we recruit doctors, right, we want them to live in Swanee County. As, as businesses come in, having a first-class medical facility, like what we're planning, and I know there are all these hypotheticals, but anyone who knows me, Maurice, will tell you, I do not stop. We will build that building. And it will be first-class, and it will be, it will be an example to all of rural America in how you care for women, and how you close those gaps. And so, I thank you for your support, and I look forward to working with you as we move forward in building this project.
Very good. Very good. Any other questions for Ms. Harris before she goes? Ms. Harris, thank you. We wish you the best of luck. I hope, I'm hopeful, and, uh, lead lots of prayers that you are successful, especially to benefit all those women out there that I do know. I agree with you that there is a need, and it'll be a blessing for our county.
Mr. Chairman, just one other matter before Ms. Harris leaves. I know we didn't take any votes tonight, but is, does there anybody have any issues with, it's a large expense for all of her and her people to come here, to be there for this meeting. That's why they came here today, because they knew we were voting on it. Is there any reason for them to come back if we incorporate these changes?
Not for me.
I don't mind. I don't mind.
Not on mine. If we incorporate those changes, I'm good.
Okay. Does it help? Just to spare you guys the time and expense from coming down?
Mr. Chairman, no, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it. And, and, you know, listen to all of us talk here, and I, I just want you to know, I want the community, I want my board to know, I'm excited for this. I'm excited for you. I'm excited that we are, you know, one, the first, and, and you may do 20 more like this, you know? And it's, it's exciting. And again, we don't want you to fail. We want you to succeed. We just want to make sure that we're protecting our community as well. So, please don't take it personally, anything we did. That's all I'm saying. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
No good.
Ms. Harris, thank you and your family for coming and friends. Thank y'all for coming so much. We still got some more business. There's bad weather out there. With no disrespect on our hot half, if you guys want to go ahead and slide out, we won't come back to your topic tonight. It's done. So, if you guys want to go ahead and go home, please feel free to do so. Safe travels. Yes, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for coming. Where are we at? Item number, we got item number, that was item number nine. So, item number 10, discussed with possible board action, the priority road list for submission to the Florida Department of Transportation. Mr. Scott?
You have a recommendation from our fellow work staff about adding different projects. 252, County Route 137, County Route 250, the second, second version of that, and then 184th. Any concerns, any questions, any other ideas that you wanted to throw out there?
No, I just want to make a comment to my fellow board members, because County Route 250 is in my district. But, so, construction hopefully will start this, this summer, 2025, on the first part of 250. And it's DOT's recommendation for us, they made us bust it up into half. That's how we ended up with 51 to 193rd Road, which is Clayland Road. And they told us to pick which half. It's like, no, we're not picking. You pick based on, pick on, based on traffic counts. So, the traffic counts were higher on the eastern end of 250, closer to 51. So, that's how that got started. And then, there was DOT's recommendation to maybe bust, bust the second half into halves due to, that pie's only so big, and they got to slice it amongst some, Commissioner Ray's been on this a long time. They got to slice that into, I think, 11? Is 11 fiscally conservative counties in the district?
I believe so. 11 or 14.
So, it may take us a little bit longer to get there, but hopefully we can keep 250 moving along by cutting the second half in half again. So, anyway, that's, that's why that's broken up as it is.
One thing we staff did, Brendan spoke with representatives of DOT that kind of takes care of this list. And they're looking at smaller projects when it comes to dollar signs, busting things up in, in smaller things that Brendan spoke to her. If you'd like to ask any questions. But that's why the recommendation came in, like it did, is, you know, in the past, like 76th Street is an example, the, seeing those kind of numbers for a project is not what they're looking for now. It is what... seeing those kind of numbers for a project is not what they're looking for now, is what, 11 million dollar project, whatever.
They don't look for 18 million dollar projects anymore. They're looking for a much smaller size and do more of them, even if it takes them multiple years to do a road, and do it in phases, apparently.
That's, that's what we're told.
I can't vote for any of that. It ain't, all of it ain't District 5.
One of them, yeah.
It used to be.
That's what I'm saying. The other three needs to be in there, too. I'm just messing y'all.
I don't have any problems with any of them.
I'm good with it.
I'm good, I'm never gonna quit beating the drum till y'all throw me out of office, but I'm gonna give my own thing.
When you gonna give up on 100?
It ain't, it ain't never gonna happen.
I'm fine with it. Commissioners have any questions or comments?
I don't have any question on this one, but I, when are we starting on 76th Street?
So Brenda's getting closer. You wanna speak to that? Well, you speak, you can speak to that in a minute. Let's, let's get this done first, but.
Yeah, I almost wanted to laugh, I heard Travis said that they're gonna start on time. I pray they do for you, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
I pray they do. But I have no problem with this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so do I have, we need a motion to approve, to submit this recommended list?
Six.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner White, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5 to 0, Mr. Scott. The next item on the agenda, are there any additional agenda items?
No, sir.
So administrators' comments, you wanna jump back to Commissioner Hale's thing, under administrators' comments?
Would you like to, Brenda just give an update on 76th Street?
And I don't wanna hold everybody up, 'cause I know that the freezing part's fixing to be on us folks here, real quick.
Very soon, the holdup has been the debris.
Okay. I just want the public to hear that publicly.
No, okay.
They call me all the time, and I just want them to hear that from one other of me. Thank you.
The, the Locklear team rode with the contractor and agreed that that's not gonna be a problem they're gonna get moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks to Mr. Locklear's team. Just a couple things, Westlake delegation, next Tuesday, C-Hall, we'll follow up with reminders on that. Just, we've got sand out on the bridges, hopefully it doesn't wash off, hopefully it'll do some good. We've got message boards out, we met this morning at 6:30, we had fellow work staff, park staff there, parks team went out and got the message board distributed, fellow works guys, and gals got, or, you know, guys and gals worked together to get the sand distributed out. Again, the warming center is up and running at the Coliseum, and just, biggest thing is just stay off the roads, you know, just stay off the roads, be safe. You get the black ice out there, you don't see it, but all of a sudden, you'll be in the ditch and around the tree, and we don't want that, we want everybody to be safe. One thing we did the other day was bid out, repair of a guardrail after the storm, the, it came in at 30,000, 646 was low bid, and we just need approval to move forward, that is within my spending authority, but we did ask you out for, for a bid, so we need the commission to approve that, if that's your wishes.
Question?
I don't have any problem with that, I'm like the motion.
It was on 25, 137, I'm sorry.
Have a motion to approve that request by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Y'all approved earlier the RFQ for the, the Project Summit property, that was graded today. If anybody cares to see the results on the, on the ranking, Middle or Leg was the, the top vote getter, the top-ranked firm we'll start negotiating with, but just, you know, in the past, we've tried to put that information in the packets, it was not, it was done today, so didn't have time. If anybody wants to see that, we have, have a copy of that, so. And that's all we got, everybody be safe, and appreciate the team coming together. County officers are gonna be closed tomorrow, keep everybody safe, we'll, we'll have some administrative staff working, we'll have, me, where my fellow works at tomorrow, maybe, but fellow works will be working, and parks staff will be working also, so, and obviously, March guys will be there when we need them, so if you may need anything, let us know, and we're here to serve you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any commission have any questions for Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving along, board members' inquiries, requests, and comments. I think we started with Commissioner Perkins last time, so can any, Commissioner Hale, we'll start with you.
Nothing, just a great meeting. Just everyone be safe, we will go out, we have to see that, too. Thank you.
Same here, I'm good.
Commissioner Perkins?
Oh, I'm echoing the same thing, be safe out there, you know, we're just grateful and thankful for our, our team, Swanee, that's out there working, and we just hope our, all our employees be safe tomorrow, and their families, and, you know, just praying for them out there, they're working. And I did, I went out to Ms. Christian's thing, I did enjoy.
Oh, so you were the one gold shining star.
Well, you, didn't you know? That's one of the, that's on the picture of everybody.
There's gonna be a picture somewhere.
Yeah.
I was at a funeral, did I get home after, be at a funeral?
He'd be on the big screen.
We had a.
I was at a funeral, he was at a wedding. Go ahead, shining star, finish. Shining star.
So it was very, it was very informative, I did enjoy it, and I'd like to hear again, too, and I didn't get a chance to get a book from him, but very good.
Very good, Commissioner. Old shining star down there. Go ahead.
Stay warm.
He has heat down back there.
Yeah, I'll keep it short, too, y'all stay safe, stay warm. Mr. Scott's telling me it's on April 29, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Swan County Fairgrounds, so there'll be a North Florida Transportation Plan at some, is that open to the public? No, it's not open to the public. You're pointing at it, tell me to tell everybody. Y'all know now, so if you show up, I don't want to kick you out.
We have to RSPP, so.
Y'all be careful going home, stay safe. I think everybody up here's got chores to do when they get there to prepare, finish preparing, so y'all get home in 10 to, 10 to those. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hale.
Take it.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five oh.
I was coming, I think that you weathered for it.